So we collected 1.67 so far, village taxes, ninety-six and a half percent of the levy. In line over where we've been at this time in previous years, so we're doing good. Thirty-nine hundred in penalty. The AUD is done, sent to the state. It takes several months to review, and they also don't like to review until the financials are completely audited, so that there's less changes than need to be made. So the financial independent auditors were here for three days. They've told me that they didn't find anything material, no errors, no problems that they can see, no misconduct. So they have a little bit more work to do on their end, finish the reports, and they'll get it to us. Doesn't take a few weeks, usually takes a couple of months. And then they'll come do a presentation to the board once they give us the draft. I'm hoping October, last year it was December, so we'll see when they can get it done. But it's all in their hands, they don't need anything else from us as of now. For EFC, we had short-term financing for the market street pump station and the relining projects. That has been converted to a bond. So now that's a twenty-year bond, we start making payments this year. Budgeted for, we knew this was coming, it's just finally, EFC said, we're ready.
And did the paperwork go to the EFC, that one, for the January?
Yes.
Michelle, what's the annual amount we pay for the bond, monthly?
Principal is about twenty, and then the interest, it's half interest with the state. Think it's about two percent that we end up paying net on the total amount. And then it goes down every year based on the outstanding principal amount. I can get you the exact numbers, I have a fee schedule, I just don't have it with me.
Thank you.
So while we're talking about bans of bonds, we always talk about this, the village will need to ban bond some of our bans, but we've always thought that we're not going to do it until a dam is ready to go because we don't want to do it twice. So if there are any projects coming up that we need to ban for, that's something that, we're only in August, but we would need to decide by December to get it going for May. So it's far off, but it's really not that far. Usually we only want to ban for big projects. I don't know, we like, we've talked about doing repairs on buildings and stuff like that, and I don't think that's necessarily high enough for a ban. But if the water and sewer departments need to do something, we've been talking about sledge management, that's something that we might need to look into. EFC is coming out with more funding though, so there's ways that way. We could do short-term financing, get into a bond, they have grants, they have engineering grants now. There's a lot of sources of funding. We'd still have to fund at least probably fifty percent of it. Like right now, we're funding seventy-five percent, but half-interest rate. So those are things that we need to think of and apply for. I think the due date is October first, it's the Clean Water Act. Other than that, there's two reports attached. One is just a summary of the Fireman's Service Award, the portfolio, how it's been performing from inception to date. Our investment manager sent it to us, so I just hope that was correspondence, she went with me. Did really well last fiscal year. Not always, but it's doing on par with, over app, if you average out the years, it's on par with our assumptions when we do our Penex reports. And then the biggest packet is the financial reports for water sewer, general fund revenues expenditures through July thirty-first, and we only have two months in, nothing outstanding, nothing crazy blowing the budgets out. So I don't know if anybody had any questions about the financial reports. So then the last topic is something just to start the conversation going, is grants and funding. And it's a good thing to just start talking about. I put together a page of grants that I've found. It doesn't mean we're eligible for them, it doesn't mean that we're going to get them, it's just what I think we might be eligible for after doing preliminary research and things that we might want to try for. Obviously the Clean Water Act, the engineering phase is new for the EFC. The DEC has a municipal waste reduction and recycling program, highly competitive. This one is a first come, first served rolling basis. There's no deadlines like most grants. So this is something if we want to go for, we figure out what we want the grant to be for and apply sooner rather than later. You can do equipment if it's dedicated to recycling, so a truck or receptacles, either public bins, bins for residents, and it's big on marketing and re-information, education materials. So I know we've explored trying to get education out to the residents about, you know, what to recycle, what we can recycle. If we want to do that, there's money for it, we just have to apply and see if we're competitive enough with our plan. The, right now we have fifty percent grant from the Federal Department of Justice for new bulletproof vests, because it found the state does it for new hires, they'll match that other fifty percent. But only new hires. I found that there's a historic restoration grant within the Parks Department. So the whole village of Cold Spring is considered, not the whole village, a large part of it is considered historic district, and it's on one of the eligible historic landmarks, even though it's not a landmark per se, like a building. So I don't know exactly what we'd be eligible for, but that doesn't come out again until April. So that one we have to keep in the back of our mind to think about.
I know that they had, are looking for funding for the design guide. I don't know what the date of completion of the design guide, so that's a possibility.
This the project that the HGRB has already been working on?
Yes.
I think we can't get more funding for it because it's outside of the original scope of the project. I believe we had asked the state for it twice, and they turned us down both times.
On any of those, is there like a history or where you can look and see what was granted in the past? Do they show any?
Some of them, so the way the state works and how I've had to find some of these grants, you can just go to NewYorkState.gov and say, let me hit the grants button. You have to go into the Parks Department, read everything, go into the DEC, go into the Department of Justice, and see what they can go. So some departments are really good about, you know, this is what was awarded, this is who got it, what they got it for, and your guidelines. And some departments are like, oh, call the eight-hundred number and see what happens. Which I was telling you about that a little bit earlier, Dave. So I know that if we want to focus on one or two specific grants, I could really look, do a deeper dive into what people have been awarded. Like the Clean Water Act, it doesn't tell you what people have been awarded. But the DOT, the Main Street Project, something like that, they tell you what's been awarded throughout the municipalities.
Does anybody remember when the sledge prototype or trials are supposed to be completed?
At least two of them have already been done.
Yeah, but the third one, it seems to me that might be a good candidate for the Clean Water.
I think for the engineering fees and for the grant.
And is there anywhere we could use the Department of Transportation, engineering fees for any of the street improvements?
Like, you know, like Chip's money?
In addition to Chip's money. So let's say that the village has a water leak somewhere, but we don't know where.
No, so the engineering grants given by the Clean Water Fund are for projects to get them to the Clean Water Grant Eligibility. So it has to be a project that would, that should be eligible for the big grant, then they'll assist you with the engineering to get you to shovel-ready.
So maybe, but sledge reform to that category?
I think so.
Are there any grants that you've come across which give money for capital improvements or repairs to structures?
So those may come through the dormitory authority. But they, it's the State Municipal Facilities Program. But it needs to be sponsored and come through the Senate or the Assembly. So that is where it's the, call your local eight-hundred number and ask for more information.
Well, certainly Sandy Galef and Sue Serena have been very helpful in the past. I would think we could come up right now to see if we could get some.
Through Sandy Galef's office, we just received some multimodal funding.
Yes, yes.
Sue Serena has helped out the police department in the past, she did not do a little community grant this year. But it's, that's, yeah, what we've been doing. Now for that, the Municipal Facilities Program, that has a list of every municipality, every dollar amount and every project, and whether it came from the Assembly or the State or the Senate. And the only other big thing that I think we should work towards would be, if we wanted to do large paving jobs again, is to do something like the Main Street Project. If the village decides they want to take on something else of that nature. When I spoke to Danya at the DOT, she said those types of fundings come out roughly every two years. So the last one was in eighteen, twenty-eighteen. So she anticipates twenty-twenty, but there's no program specs, there's nothing. And those are usually large projects. So that's just something to keep in mind too, if it comes.
Would you have a, would you find out if when Meche was paved last, is there any history where we could dig at the, you know, if she was responsible or if we're responsible for that?
Um, I can call Danya, she's, she's really good. She's an assistant in the local DOT division for like Poughkeepsie and Plutnam. So I can ask her, and if not, she would know who to ask.
Is it sooner or later, a lot of the crosswalk areas are in need, so.
And this is Main Street below ninety, right?
Yes.
Um, does the, any board members know of any local grants or state grants or any source of funding? If you're here in travels? Okay. And that's all I have.
Anything else from the board for Michelle? Thank you, as always. Let's see, the next was the review of Afghan for Putnam Wine and Food Fest, which I've tabled and called, is there a name for her? Drunman, Ms. Drunman, anyway. We need to incorporate a few more requirements on our application, especially after the last event that was held. She, she sponsored, so we'll wait on that one and table that. And I'll work with Ruth Ann and the rec department and see if we can go over what was done. Also, we may have a joint meeting maybe with John Shear and her and the board and the rec to kind of tighten up the rental requirements, what we expect. Next is request to wait their day advance notice for liquor license renewal for Whistling Willies. I don't know why these always happen, but we routinely do them, so any discussion on that?
Why, why does it come to this? Is anyone from Whistling Willies here? Why does Whistling Willies not, and, and others, not file?
It seems like almost every year.
In a, on a timely basis.
I mean, they're supposed to basically give us thirty days to react in case we have any complaints, is that, that's basically the idea, right?
But I, I feel like this one was.
I mean, this is, they're not giving us thirty days because their license, I guess, is, is expiring, and so they're in a hurry, they should notify us a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, there's no indication of what we got from them when their license expires. Other than theoretically, it will expire in thirty days.
Thirty days from when? Maybe it's me. Hey, there's not a lot of information here, can we, can we push this? Sure as I can make it happy, but can we push this, so it makes me get informed?
Uh, sure. Will you, do you want to make, make the call?
Call him?
Yeah.
Sure. I'll be on Thursday afternoon.
What's that?
I'll be on Thursday afternoon.
Now is that?
I, you know, this application basically.
Yeah, I don't know Frank Ray used to be, I don't, I guess that's not the owner name.
I don't, who, isn't it?
I thought it was Ray's son, but I don't, I don't know who he was, who is going to.
I'll find out.
Or five times tomorrow, I'll send an email to the.
I don't even know where the municipality is supposed to sign.
Jeff gave me a letter prepared for Dave to sign and we approved. They're basically going to Whistling Willies and saying, we don't pre-claiming a thirty-day advance notice. And it was going back to the lawyers. And other times we have gotten letters from lawyers, I'm not even sure. This is an application, this doesn't look like anything we usually get.
Yeah.
Something like that, if we need more clarification.
We will table that. Uh, next, quest for American Legion for adjustment, assess the water rents and rentals. From the information I have, you guys can jump in whenever you'd like. We have overcharged by sixty dollars with the, just, we're being, you're being charged right now for two sewer rates and three water rates. And I'm not sure how the sewer rate of one oh eight came into play, but that's over. So through discussions and looking at billing, it's a sixty-dollar overcharge on that.
That's all, sixty bucks?
Excuse me, sir, could you stand over near the clock so we can see your smiling face, please?
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, let me run through what I have. When the county moved out in December, the first quarter of the year, it gave us, what the county was paying, I guess, was three hundred twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. And we thought that was much because the building is empty, nobody's using it. So we committed complaint about that, and the solution to that was put a water meter in. No more flapping, you only get charged for what you use. So after two thousand ninety dollars for a water meter, another fifteen hundred dollars for new faucets, new valves, there's not a leak in the place. The second quarter bill is for seven hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents, which nobody uses in the building. We can't afford this. For seven hundred dollars a quarter, we just, we'll be out of business in no time. I don't, I don't know, you know, I, I think we only used eight hundred sixty-six gallons of water in the quarter.
Huh?
It's expensive water.
What?
That's expensive water.
It's a dollar a gallon, you know, and, uh, we're here pleading for help.
So the quarterly rate, the new quarterly rate, just to be, just to be clear, is two hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, it's not seven hundred dollars?
Well, I sure, I sure, oh, right, here.
The additional?
Seven sixteen sixty-two.
Okay, but that's, that's not the quarterly rate.
That's, that included one, two one-time charges, one for the new meter which was under eighty-one. One for the new meter which was under eighty-one, and one for the startup cost which was two hundred.
But we paid for the meter. We paid two thousand ninety dollars for the water meter.
They'll have all the.
You got the meter from us, right?
Huh?
You got the meter from us?
I, I believe they did, yes, it is, it is the bill for the meter and the installation.
The water meter.
Who did come, who's the doctor?
The Saudi?
That's not.
Town will supply water meter and shut down the main, okay.
Town will supply new water meter, so we paid for that. Chop, you paid for chopping the floor in the bathroom to install a new water meter, install a new shut-off valve before and after, and tie into existing copper lines. The meter was paid for by the village, includes all pipe and fitting to complete.
Okay, well, I saw, I saw we paid for the meter.
You paid for the plumbing, to do all the work. The meter was one eighty-one twenty-five and then the setup.
Excuse me, why are we paying for a meter when the meters were put into every other house in the home?
You're not paying for the meter.
Yeah, they, they paid for a new meter. The meters were put in when the meter company was in town to do it, which was over a period of like six months or so. And everybody was notified that if you didn't get your meters done within that time when all the meters were changed. Now, you guys never had a meter, so.
So we never had a meter?
So.
So we should, we still getting our meter?
No.
Because the, every other person in this whole village that has a water meter, got their meter, and we're charged for it, because I wasn't charged for mine.
Because you, you came in when the company was in town making the changes, which was a period of about six months. Everybody after that time had to pay to bring them back in. And anybody that didn't have a meter had to pay for a meter, which everybody did originally. You know, when your old meter was put in somewhere back whenever.
No, I didn't know what that cost was, that was when my father was still alive, and I don't know about that. But I do know that when they came in, they changed the meter.
Right, they changed.
And there was no charge on my bill for a new meter or anything else. And I presume that every other village member and every other village home had the same thing. Why, why, why isn't the American Legion giving the same?
Currency. There were, there were a bunch of residences who were not available when the company was here changing meters, and they had to pay extra when the company came back, and your meter wasn't. Yours is a brand-new meter, so it's not the same as the change meter, yours is a brand-new meter. Anybody who gets a brand-new meter who hasn't had a meter before is being charged one hundred eighty-one, because that's what it costs the village for the meters from the company, from endpoint.
So, so if I understand you right, charges the three hundred eighty-one twenty-five for a meter.
One eighty-one twenty-five plus two hundred for the setup, for the startup.
Plus two, two hundred nineteen, right? So that's five hundred dollars, won't be on our next water bill?
It's, three hundred eighty-one twenty-five will not be on your next water bill.
But the two nineteen twenty-seven will?
What are you saying?
I got a flat water charge and a fixed charge. I, I don't know what either one of them, you know.
Which, which really you're looking at?
This is, top says flat water charge, then there's a fixed charge.
Okay, this is the old, this is.
That's the June thirty-first, thirty.
These two.
The three eighty-one is the water.
This is the water, this is the one that won't be there anymore.
Okay.
These two will be there less, but sixty dollars that we overcharged you, so these, instead of being three hundred and.
So it'll be four hundred dollars a month?
It'll be two hundred and seventy-one, two hundred and seventy-two a month, plus whatever small usage you have.
Two seventy-two a month? It's two seventy-one a quarter.
No, sorry, I don't want to.
Quarter.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's two hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy cents a quarter.
Well, that's a lot less than seventy.
Plus whatever usage.
What's the?
And plus your usage, if you use it, then it's charged by the meter. Whatever is on your meter, then there's a charge for that.
Right, okay.
But what's the difference for charges?
That's it.
One's fixed and one's?
And then also, you had a startup cost, which I'm going to recommend that we waive that. We, we have the new meter cell point, which is one eighty-one. There's also a startup cost for two hundred that I would suggest we waive.
Which you already paid.
Which you already paid.
Thank you very much.
You should get a credit for that.
You want to say something?
I just wanted to let them know that on this, thank Mr. Mayor, trustees, I just want to let you know there's two addresses on the air. And that's what, we're a little bit concerned with that because we're not, we don't want to pay for the ambulance call. We're only in the, in that building roughly in the course of a year, a hundred and ten days, a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred and ten hours. That's it, that's it, the course of a year, that's the max that we spend in there. I can tell you exactly how many day, what days we meet, whatever. An example. The Legion meets for two hours, once a month. BFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars, they meet for two hours, once a month. That's on the outside, most, most of the time we're in, out of there within an hour. The auxiliary ladies, Legion ladies, they meet once a month for two hours also, so. There's really not a lot of time that we spend in there. The Putnam Commanders meeting, we, the five different Legions in the, in Putnam County meet once every, I'm sorry, week, twice a year there, at max. And the most, we, I'm giving them an outside figure of three hours is what we put in there for each meeting. And that's, they're in and out of there by, within two hours. Maintenance, we spend maybe three, three hours a month fixing the place up, cleaning up, cleaning the bathrooms, cleaning the stuff. We do that ourselves, all right? And the total of that is a hundred and ten hours for the whole year. That's about the amount of time that we spend in there, so we really can't be using a lot of water. We don't use much water at all. Most of our water drinking, what do we drink from bottles? So, just to let you know, we appreciate everything you've been doing, and I appreciate what you're giving us here tonight. But we'd like you to consider, we're a charitable organization, the BFW is a charitable organization as well. We donate a lot of money, whatever monies we get in, we donate a good portion of that money to various charities, both local and national, as well as statewide. So whatever appreciate, whatever you can do for us, we appreciate. We're just out of funds right now because we don't have any income coming in.
Will you guys be renting to the town hall?
Yes, we.
The town is going to rent it.
They haven't signed a contract yet. It'll be the courthouse though, it's not, town will have to, it'll be the courthouse.
So it'll be for like certain days?
That'll be, they'll be in it five days a week, you know, the court clerk and stuff. And that should be in nine months, they're thinking, I'd say it's going to be more than that.
There's two different addresses on the bill.
Yes.
What is the address?
Uh, one is four, ten, and the other is fourteen.
And the one for your, I know the, the ambulance corps gets a separate bill.
I got one other, one other question that's not involved with this. You sent me a letter about the snow removal, you won't be doing it any longer. Now, do you, do you guys do the ambulance corps? No?
We did, we did that area because we had an agreement with Putnam County. That we did that, American Legion, that, and Marzoni Line, and also the Sheriff's area. And they, in exchange, they did highway work for us on nine days.
Okay, I was just wondering, how you gonna do the ambulance corps and that, sort of same driving?
Only one meter. All they have their own one.
The ambulance corps separate from us, so I have nothing to do with it. I think it's our property. We really don't have any, we don't connect anything.
I mean, a couple of things we can discuss, you know, going forward is if, if the town's going to be renting it or whatever, then they can be responsible for it.
I understand, yes.
If, when that's not happening, you know, I took the highway, and as long as it's not a priority, you know, I can have those guys come up and plow. But, you know, like before, we had to get up there right away.
Right.
So as long as it's not a priority, you guys aren't there a lot, and there's nobody stationed there.
No, we hardly use it.
We hardly use it.
Then we can probably.
The problem would be done for the ambulance car more than us.
So we can probably work something out and we can further discuss that, so I'll try to.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, I'll, I'll make the motion to, uh, to waive the two hundred dollar startup cost that they've paid already and, uh, and that'd be applied as credit to their next billing. I guess that's the best way to work that.
The only way.
The only way, I guess we can.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
I'm, I'm recusing myself, I'm just, I'm Michael. I'm not voting on this.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm re- recruiting, myself, recusing.
You wanna go cruising?
Abstaining.
I'm abstaining, I'm not voting.
You're cruising.
I'm too, I'm too connected to this.
Glad you were here though.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, moving, moving along here. Next is, uh, our friends at Magazzino Italian Art. Have, I, I met with the representatives talking about they, they would like to have a parade, a performance type parade in November on the sixteenth at approximately twelve-thirty. The date is a solid date because they, it's, this is part of a, an exhibit, which runs from October seventeenth to December sixth. So when I initially talked to them, I brought up the fact that, you know, it's middle of December, weather could be iffy, maybe not the best time for a parade. They understand all of this, and this is a date that works with their schedule. The startup was twelve-thirty, that's not cast in stone. I asked, I'll, I'll give you a little background on it. It's, uh, Magazzino Italian Art Foundation is the one sponsoring and organizing it. It's, uh, it's created by Marinella Centora. She's a multi-disciplinary artist, and she's created these performance parades in, in Europe and a number of places. I think she's respected in her field, not a circle I travel, so you can, you can, you know, Google or whatever and, you know, learn more about her. And she, and the person that I met with, Long Vittoria, who is a representative for Magazzino, is Elanka Barodo, and she's an assistant curator at the Guggenheim. This performance is part of an exhibit she is curating at the Italian Cultural Institute in New York City, which I said runs from October seventeenth to December sixth. The parade is basically a performance piece. What they do is they want to make it a community event. There's invitations sent out to various musical and dance groups. And then they, I believe, and I don't have only information, the, the representatives couldn't be here because both of them are out of the country right now, so, or well, actually, one is in, one is in Italy and one's in California. I can give you more information, actually, I, I work at Magazzino. Okay, well, I'll, I'll do my. Yeah, go ahead. And you can correct anything I say. Yeah, no, you're, you're doing very well. I'm going along with one meeting. So, uh, like I said, in, in the past, they've done a number of these, uh, these performance type parades. The whole parade is basically, is a performance. I'm not sure exactly how it moves down, down the, uh, down the street or how that works. They initially wanted to start at the town hall, but then said that probably the same areas would be better, which kind of aids us in policing if we approve this. In the past, uh, in the past, they've had everything from high school bands to opera singers included, and dance performances. And they try to get the community, uh, community groups and reach out to them. So say they might reach out to Howden and work something with them. They would have someone come up that actually helps with the choreographing and working with each individual performance. And, and that's basically what I know about it. I did have, asked Larry to be here, who was generously giving up some more of his time, uh, you know, to talk about, because the first concern obviously is it's a couple-hour parade probably, which also is, uh, they can probably work with something on that, but that's what they initially said. So I asked Larry if he'd be here tonight because first concern, you know, for myself and I, probably others would be, you know, having closing down streets on Main Street, how it affects not only the residents, but, you know, main sheet businesses. I think more the residents than businesses because, uh, I, I, because Magazzino's well organized. It's not like when we organize a parade and have no money to promote or whatever. Magazzino actually, you know, has resources and I'm sure, um, as, as with the ball rolling that we had performance a few years ago, did you get it? No, there's, there's one that's after, it's gotta die. It's either following us or there's one in each room.
I think there's one for each of us.
Anyway, um, like I said, they, they have, you know, they have resources and they're going to, you know, be putting this out there and I'm sure that, um, anyone interested in, uh, in, in events like this will definitely be tuned in, especially from New York City. And a lot of them would be traveling by, by train, I would imagine. And I, you know, just brought up to them that that might be a way to actually promote it better also. So I did ask Larry if he'd be here, I asked, you know, explained it, explained, you know, how long it would be, if it would be possible, and, you know, and the logistics of that. And Larry said quickly that he didn't see a problem with that, but Larry, you can, if you'd like to elaborate.
I have a quick question for, but why is it last two hours, do you know why, I mean, what is it?
I guess there's performances that go on as the parade goes on and maybe you can. Yeah, so it's not like just you get on, the, a band plays and it keeps going, there's actually stop and there's a performance. But I don't know how that's coordinated with all the groups.
If it's being done in the road dead, I don't see how we can tolerate that. People need to be able to get in and out of the side street. And emergency responders who are on Main Street need to be able to get up Main Street and down Main Street. So I'm, I'm just, I can't see it.
Okay, well, before we get in, before we get into that, just, I mean, that's one of the reasons why I brought Larry here is because that is a concern, that, that it would be two hours, so how would we do that? And how would we work with, you know, the side streets, so, you know?
There's a few things we can do. I've, I've ran some big events down in this, in New York City when I worked down there. It was part of the Yankee Stadium detail, so, I mean, we shuttle people in and out of Yankee Stadium and you're talking about, you know, forty, fifty thousand people. For a village, my only first concern when I asked the mayor was for the residents and for the businesses. And if he got the okay with those and it's cut down to approximately two hours here or there, a little less or maybe a little bit more. As long as there's nothing like a stage that is, that is embedded somewhere where I can't move something. So basically, my answer to the board would be, I can, with enough officers, I can move people in and out of side streets. I can get them to the residents. We have a main thoroughfare coming down. We can go down northern to get anybody on this side of the village to their houses, whether they go up the wrong way or not. You know, we can, we can work that out. Again, it's a two-hour, it's a two-hour thing, we're not, not closing, we're not talking about closing the whole village down for eight hours. We can leave Fair Street open, that'll be a, a straight main through because we need to get fire trucks through there if something, if something happens or any other ambulances or vehicles.
How do you get the fire trucks out of the fair?
That's why I need to.
For the main street?
That's, that's, that's why I need to make sure there's nothing, uh, like a stage or anything like that that's put in place for these performances. We gotta get a fire truck out, we can immediately move into the, into the main street, move all the performance onto the side street and get the fire truck north or south, well, I'm sorry, east or west onto the village streets.
So let's say that you're, they're doing a before interpretive performance between High Street and Church Street. Where do they move out of the way?
They're going, we'll push them straight to both sides of the sidewalk. I will cut, I will cut the middle of Main Street in two, in two places with enough officers, we'll split them on both sides. We can get the fire truck to go west.
For a period of two hours, you're gonna be able to do that? I mean, you, what, what I hear you saying is if I live, for example, on Church Street, I can't get out of Church Street. I mean, I've got, I gotta get out.
You, you, you're giving, you're giving me two different situations here. You're giving me an emergency situation and you're giving me somebody that needs to get out of Church Street because they want to go out and shop or they want to go out and go somewhere.
Yes, and I want to be able to allow them to do that.
With, with enough advance and let the people know what's going on. And if they need to get out, we can have certain streets, if you have to get out. As the performance goes by, what we used to do even now in the city, when there's a parade going by, they, they stop the performance for a second, you can let some cars go through when it's intermediate. We're not talking about two, three thousand people.
How many?
I think I clarify a little bit, yeah, I, there won't, I don't think there's any sort of floats or anything like that. It's all, uh, marching bands and.
How many?
Well, I've.
How many people?
Involved in, in the, in the parade. Involved in the parade, I would say, you know, it's gonna be between forty and sixty people, something like that.
That's all?
Maybe a hundred.
Between forty and sixty people are going to be taking two hours to get.
Well, I think two hours is probably, uh, you know, more than it's gonna be. It'll probably be more like an hour, maybe hour and a half.
And where do they end up, they start at St. Mary's and then?
At the riverfront. At the riverfront, uh, you know, where they do the, the movies. The dance stand, or they said, they do the dance stand or outside. Yeah.
I can't imagine forty to eighty people, whatever the number was that you can say would be a parade on Main Street.
So the idea is to involve as many local groups as possible. What this artist does is she kind of makes a portrait of a, a village by having different organizations all participate.
So you really don't go on many people.
This is true. So we're trying to, you know, get Haldane involved certainly and, um, you know, we, Dar Williams is interested and, uh, I've talked to Cynthia Leganza because they want to have a classical element, a classical music element to it. So it's, it's all like local people. We'd like to have, you know, the Cub Scouts could be involved and the Girl Scouts, you know, just groups of kids. And, uh, there are choreographies involved that have very simple movements, uh, for, you know, kid groups or. So it's, you know, it's kind of unfolding.
So at any one point, well, we don't know how many people, um, are, does everyone start off at St. Mary's and then some of them walk down to Church Street and perform? And then some of them go beyond that and, and?
Yeah, essentially, I think there'll be little like stops where maybe there's a dance that some, a group does, you know, and then they'll continue on.
Do all the performances be at the same place? Like the Thanksgiving Day parade, all the performances are in front of Macy's?
Right.
Is there one area where all the performances?
I think not necessarily, maybe things happen in some.
That's something I would suggest. From my point of view, I would want to have something at least in that one block area that they're gonna stop and perform so I know when I can close and open up streets because that would be the main thing for me to get it. Now, if you're talking sixty and you're inviting all these groups, we could have close to five hundred people. That becomes just a small, a, a bigger problem. But I mean, if they're gonna constantly just decide they're gonna perform whenever they want on different blocks, that's gonna be a major problem. I'd say no to that. I'd have one area maybe right here at Fair Street where we have an open area, which is big enough, where if I need to get them out of the way, if we need to get a fire truck down, I can do that. That would be the biggest area I would probably like to choose if they're gonna do a performance. Or down Lower Main at the end.
Well, we certainly want to work with you and, and, you know, if that's easier, then, you know, absolutely.
Larry, my other question was when this first came up, access to Metro, access to the trains. When the trains are running, if for two hours, there's no travel back and forth down Main Street, people need to get to a train or?
Unfortunately, the sticky, only sticky point with that would be, there's two ways we can do that. We can actually have them go through, which I know they're not gonna wanna, go through the back there. Again, it's a Saturday issue, it's not like there's commuters racing through there. But I know it's a sticky point of having them go through, any public access going through the, the commutes over there.
Fourteenth.
Yeah, or I can have, again, it'd be more sticky point for me, which, that'll probably be the only way to do it because I, I wouldn't be able to close off Fair Street and have them try to go back around the other way. That would be the only access to the, to the Metro.
But the only way you get to Fourteenth is Rock Street.
Correct.
Right, so, and no, I'm sorry, you can come down Wall Street.
No, not Wall Street. I would push everybody towards Wall Street, down the back and through that way.
I mean, it's like one train an hour on the weekends.
Yes.
It shouldn't be one train each way an hour.
Correct.
So two trains, four trains? Two trains an hour?
Yeah, no, no, it's out.
Maybe talking four trains in two hours.
Yeah.
But how would people get? Let's say they were coming home from night shift or something, okay?
Well, that's not, they wouldn't, that wouldn't be affected because he's talking about twelve-thirty in the afternoon. To go over night shift, they should be.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, let's say somebody's coming, coming to Cold Spring to go home from wherever. How do they get from Metro North to home?
Saying what? They'd have to come back, we'd have to have a train to drive it, have them come over, have them come over Long Terrace, through Forge Gate, up through the back, back up Campbell.
The only way.
Back out on Main.
The only exit is Campbell.
Correct. It, it's, as you said, it's not my decision, it's not the decision of the village, we can do it. I'm just letting you know with enough officers and if I need your help, I could probably get the sheriff's to come in. I can, I can possi, I can possibly make it, I can get it done as long as you're not still getting out in a complete frozen zone. Complete frozen zone takes a lot of, which is a lot of time, like a block party, like Fishel just had their annual. Again, they closed down all, the whole part of Main Street, they had, you know, balloons, they had parties, they had, you know, booths and stuff like that. That I, I could not be able to. But I mean, if you're gonna just put it to one area where you can have the performance, which I, I would definitely suggest, right at a, a bigger area which we only have, which would be Fair Street, excuse me, or Lower Main, right outside where, before you make the left to go up to all of Long Terrace, that, that, where everybody parks waiting for the train, you can do it there or on the, down by Van's End. Those, those are the spots I would suggest for the performances.
Once the parade moves down Main Street, you could open up High Street.
Correct, that, I'm, I'm gonna, it's gonna be, while they're going by, I'd have an officer there closing it, nobody go across, and as they go past, hey, we'll push cars out of, uh, west on, on Main to nine D or out of the village if that's where they want to go.
Yes, that's John. Is it possible that you provide us with some sketches of where you would make some assumptions about how many people would be involved and, and how many people would be participating in each mini event? I, I don't mean to minimize the number of people, but each event and.
Yes, we'll certainly try to come up with a more detailed, uh, explanation for what we expect to happen. But we certainly want to cooperate with the village and make it easiest done on everyone.
There would have to be a hard deadline on how many people we're expecting. For, for me, for the, for the officer, I'm gonna need, I need a hard deadline, like I do with anything. I, I, you know, when we have the thing down at, anything down at Mayor's Park, I need a hard deadline of, all right, you know, we're gonna have a hundred people show up, I mean, a couple extra show up, twenty, thirty, it's fine, but I'm not talking another two hundred.
You need a hundred participating in the parade.
Correct.
That'd maybe more than that watching.
Yeah.
How much advertising?
Because I know when they did the ball roll, I was here for that. It was, I thought it was gonna be a little smaller than it was, but then everybody got involved, even people that were just on the side, which was kind of nice because it went quickly. It wasn't something we were shutting down for two hours, but then everybody got involved in it and it got a little more, a little more hectic as we got pushed down towards the van, the van stand because of the small, yeah, the small block. And they were rolling the ball in the middle and like everybody was kind of converted into a small area.
You guys did a great job. Thank you.
What advertising are you gonna do for this?
It will be advertised.
I mean, it will be good for the businesses on Main Street if we're bringing in people from the city or to watch it.
I think we'll bring a number of people, and I think a lot of them will take train.
And it's a new, it, it starts a new mission.
Yeah, I think they're thinking twelve-thirty. And again, I think two hours is probably, you know, a maximum. It's probably less than that. But, you know, uh, my Italian bosses, of course, are away here in August, so I'm here, doing my best. But, you know, Vittorio will be back next week and, uh, you know, we could have, uh, more specifics.
The photos on the, in the email, I can't remember, there's an email or a website that was showed. They looked like things were a lot of fun and that people were enjoying participating.
I have to say, the videos I've seen, everyone's just so joyful.
Yes, yes. And so that's the plus side, it's just, if I live here.
I understand, yes. But we want to make it, you know.
And, and the places that were, were demonstrated appeared as if they were plazas where it.
Right.
There were not any automobiles.
Right.
In, in any of the photographs.
Larger cities, yeah.
It was all in the middle of, I, you know, of this giant plaza.
Yes, that's true, yeah.
And we have exactly the opposite here.
Let's see, this one other thing on the, on the police, uh, it's, you know, they'd be paying for this, obviously, for, for any police. And also I think there's a really good relationship between Magazzino and the Sheriff's Department, so, and also with Larry and the Sheriff's Department, so I think that, you know, we'd have ample, ample, uh, police presence. So the, uh, you know, I guess one of the biggest things that I'm hearing right now is, well, if we can move people in and out of the streets, that's cool, and I don't think it's gonna be, they didn't say how long it would be, and they said some of the time, they were talking about what's gonna be down at the, at the van stand also, probably be a performance down there. So I don't know how long that would be. So it would be good to get a.
So it'd be good to get a better idea of that.
Right, so on Main Street, it would just be the beginning of it, you know, and it would probably end up down by the water, which would be less disruptive of the roads.
Because we'd have to, you know, I guess the train is one thing. We'd have to figure out what we could do with that, what the timing around the train. Maybe have it start right after the train pulls in or, I don't know, work around that schedule. So maybe it's only one and we can figure something out on that.
What about doing it all at Dockside? What about doing all the performances at Dockside and billing it as an art event at Dockside? I mean, you could still do the parade and people would just walk down Main Street to sort of draw up interest, but then once they get below the tracks, they'll go into Dockside and there would be no problem there. You could do whatever performances that you wanted concurrently or in a serial fashion. It just seems, that would be a...
I think the idea of it is, and I understand what you're saying, I think the idea of it is the performance is the parade. So the parade and the performance happen at the same time drawing people in or people of interest on the sides instead of just walking down with it. There's no performance whatsoever.
What about some mini performances, like a Pied Piper? You come down Main Street and invite everyone to walk down with you to Dockside where the major performances are going to be held. It's just a consideration.
I'm gonna have to talk to Marinella some more.
No way.
The only thing I also request is there are no performances when, once you hit Long Terrace, if I have to get any vehicles off of Lower Main, because people are still gonna be confused on what's going on and I can actually get a car through there to go up Forge Gate and get them powered off Main Street that way. So I wouldn't want a lot of people walking in the street there because that's gonna be difficult enough. And the main thing for us is if we do go ahead with this, communication, 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 communication. Anytime we do close down a street or anything like that, we did it for the bike thing a couple of years ago. I heard right from residents, I knew nothing about it. And meanwhile, it was, you know, four months in advance and everybody knew, it was on Facebook, it was on everything. Those are the small things we're always gonna run into, but that would be the biggest thing. Listen, because what we're doing, 12:30, expect there're gonna be delays, expect this is what's gonna happen. Streets gonna be closed on and off. They won't be shut down completely, you know, for a long period of time, but they will be closed, you know, we'll be closing them when we can to get everybody in and out safely.
I think it's a fabulous idea. I love the notion of it. I am concerned about the effect that it's gonna have on our merchants, that it could have. It could have a grand effect on our merchants. It could bring a lot of people in who, you know, would be willing to shop and stuff like that. But at the same time, it could also have a deterrent effect to the people who are trying to get here. So, I mean, I just remember, I'm thinking of the bike race. And the other thing that I wanna be really specific about is that performers are not taking up Main Street parking. That performer, all, everybody who's performing has to have some sort of place. If they're driving here, they have to have a place to gather and park off of Main Street so that when, you know, when Main Street merchants are starting to feel the pinch of winter...
It's a good point, yeah.
That we're not making it worse for them. I think you could, I think if you reach out to the Main Street merchants and say, look, we'd like to do this, we'd like to involve you in it somehow, that you're gonna get a lot better buying in. But a lot of us remember how bad that damn bike race was when every single rider parked on Main Street and Main Street was blocked off for the entire day. We might as well all have shut our doors and gone home. I don't want a situation like that.
Understood, yeah, that makes sense.
So try to keep that in mind when planning.
Yes.
You know, on that note, I, you know, I think we have our responsibility for all the residents and I think, you know, we always take and consider how this is gonna affect the Main Street merchants, how this is gonna affect the Main Street merchant, which is part of our responsibility. But also, we have a whole community of taxpayers that we represent. And to have a performance or something that involves them or that can be an event for them, I think we have to take that in consideration also. This is something that we're offering them. So, you know, the same with the food truck, you know, if we get into that or whatever, it's like, you know, we have to worry about the Main Street merchants and how many restaurants there are. But, you know, we never spoke about the residents and the opportunity for residents to have more, you know, have more variety in the town. And it's the same as this, you know, I think we have a responsibility for everyone. So I think we definitely have to think about the residents still. Are the residents gonna enjoy this? Is this for the residents? This is supposed to be a community event in which they're trying to draw in the community members and which I think is a great thing. So I think, you know, we have to keep in mind also the residents and how it impacts them and what we offer the residents during the year.
Oh, I'm not disputing that at all.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, if we're not talking about that, then we're just talking about that. And so I just wanted to, I wanted to put a little, you know, something out there for the residents of the village that they're important to me also and they should be to the board and, you know, and we shouldn't like just, you know, weigh everything on how well that's gonna go for one specific group in our village.
I think there is a solution to the parking issue. I think that's a very good point. We can come up with something, whether we have to use a shuttle or, you know...
I think there are plenty of solutions out there. I think just identifying potential problems ahead of time is key to making sure that... Everybody, you know, residents and merchants alike, a lot of merchants who are residents, so, you know...
Understood.
May I make a comment or do you have anything to add?
No, you can make your comment.
Okay. I'm Eliza Starbuck. I'm a resident, I'm a merchant. I'm the president of Timber Commerce, although I do not speak on behalf of the Timber Commerce tonight. And my general feeling, I think everyone has a really valid point and I think the conversation's really good because there are gonna be good suggestions, like planning for parking and things like that will be valid or planning for like traffic flow that you guys need to consider as you plan it. And then, you know, as somebody who sometimes considers myself an artist, it's always a work in progress and it's always changeable and movable and evolvable. So I think all these comments will be brought back to the artists and Magazzino and applied, I would expect. But I think my business would not have a problem with it. I find that all of these events that happen on Main Street or in the village are fun for residents, they're fun for visitors, and they bring people here who may not have ever been here. I think it's really wonderful that Magazzino is trying to create an event that involves the community. Like involves, like my kid could take choreography classes and learn to dance and sing on Main Street, potentially for free, hopefully, but, you know, I don't know. So I think those elements that Magazzino is actually thinking about that is really good and should be sort of counted for. And I think that if the Village Board and the Police Department could give like requirements, like, you know, can you not block this area at any given point? Can you make it start after the train comes in at this hour and then at this hour? Those things handed to Magazzino would probably be really helpful so they could shape it a little bit better. So that's, you know, kind of where I would go with it. It seems like it's moving in that direction anyway, but that's not too sensitive. And I support the event. I think it'll be a great addition to the community and Main Street as well.
I'm not sure where, I don't know if one week will matter or if Vittorio comes and, you know, maybe explains the parade better, I don't know. Until they send out invitations and stuff, we're not gonna know how big the parade is. And so they have to know whether we're gonna allow it or not. So I'm not sure how we do that, not knowing. I'm willing to take the chance as I'm speaking for myself. But I don't know where everyone else is with that because, you know, if we, even if he explains how it's going, they send out invitations to different groups, maybe different groups aren't willing to or are busy at that time, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, the nature of the piece is it kind of is evolving depending on how many people get involved. But so far, everyone we've talked to has been very positive and would like to be involved. So, you know, I think, but it's hard to put a number on it. Anyway, Vittorio's back next week. I don't know if you wanted, you know, more information.
When do you need to have a, when's the deadline that you need to have an okay from us that you can start really pushing this? Besides yesterday? Is another week gonna make a difference?
No. No, you know, so this is November sixteenth we're talking about and like I said, people are just getting back from vacation. So, you know, at least a couple of weeks, I think, is not a problem.
Okay, so we'll table, we'll invite Vittorio next week and then he can explain better. In the meantime, there were, you know, definitely the parking and working on something with the train and a few other things we can digest and talk about more or think about and see if we can come up with solutions on that. And then if we can get more of an idea on how, you know, if it's two hours they're saying, but really it's two hours total and half the parade's gone, half, past Fair Street in an hour, that makes a big difference, I would think.
I would think that that is the case. You know, I think the majority of it probably would be down by the water. So how long it's on Main Street is probably less than an hour.
Right, okay. So I, hopefully, yeah, maybe we get that info or if you're talking to him, we can, you know, I think you get a better picture of it on how the...
Right.
How the, where the performances are. And like Larry said, if we could have that in one spot or if it's not gonna be in one spot, then explain it so Larry can make a judgment on what to do with that, you know?
Got it.
What was that?
Thunder.
I'm sorry.
Thunder.
Redcoats fire.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, approval of minutes, eight thirteen nineteen. Trustees' monthly meeting, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor? Then I think we just see approval of bills.
I move to approve batch number fifty-two fifty-eight for a total of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and thirty cents.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are going to go into executive session, discuss, what's that?
That's picnic.
What's that? Oh, yeah, all right. I was trying to ask picnic info.
Picnic info, picnic info. Just briefly, give me a little package. I'm asking if you please just look over the invitation, the invite list.
Thank you, Larry.
Yep, you're welcome. The page that says donations secured for the picnic for September twenty-first. These are actually the donations we got last year. Just so we have an idea, these were the, all the vendors who donated and what they gave us last year. So now we just have to move forward and I will ask if everyone could probably pick a couple of vendors that you'd like to go visit and ask them for a donation. We're short two vendors this year. We don't have cappuccino, we don't have Silver Spur.
Jimmy asked if he wanted, if we wanted to...
Jimmy?
Jimmy Silver Spur.
Sure. But the list that you see, the list that you see is what we got last year. And then there's a letter attached that we use going around. So if everyone could just take a look at everything in the package and if there's anyone on the invite list that should not be there or anyone that I missed.
I don't know.
Yeah, he was...
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think he was underwater.
He's underwater, okay.
Oh, yes.
The way they're arranged is...
Sorry, I...
No, 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 friend.
And then if you could take a look at the donations list and if there's any of these in particular that you would visit and ask for donations, that'd be great. And just let me know when we get here so I can pick up the slack. I have, we've got the liquor license going and I will order the tent and chairs on Thursday. And the invitations, if they're okay. If anybody sees a problem with the invitations, could you let me know ASAP? Because I was hoping to send them out by Thursday, by email. That's that. And then we can review again. Someone came in to visit today who said he's the vice president of Phillipstown Seniors and the seniors wanted to know, when is the picnic at, what time should they be there? So, it's a total, twenty-first of the...
Anything else on that?
Is this the senior and volunteer?
Yes, the employee volunteer senior.
Good.
Thank you.
Just a couple, there's an Indian Point Emergency Siren tomorrow at ten thirty. So get on your Facebook and say, what is that, what's happening? You'll know, you'll be able to answer and feel very important. Also, on Wednesday, September fourth, at the Town Hallers, at seven thirty, is a CCA workshop regarding, let's see, to learn about and discuss the possibility of Phillipstown promoting a current community solar opportunity. The solar farm is located in Rochester and Ulster. Made available through a recently launched Hudson Valley Community Power CCA and Jules involved. So anyway, interested, stop by the Town Hall for that. As I said, we're going to executive session to discuss specific individuals' employment. Once we come out, we will not be, we will just adjourn, we won't be carrying on any further business.
Someone gonna make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion, Michael, that we go into executive session to discuss the employee and history of a specific individual.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.